We'll call the Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021 Reno County Commission to order. First off, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and then a prayer by Pastor Kim Berry from Trinity Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I invite you to pray. God of all creation fall is among us. The seasons are changing once again with the tumble of red and yellow leaves, signifying that it is time to prepare for the next season and next phase. Thank you, faithful God, for your presence and provisions. Guide us as we meet together and give our leaders wisdom. Let us work together for the good of all. We pray all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Just first off, thank you for your patience in waiting to see and hear this commission meeting. There was no problem getting started with YouTube this morning as we changed the location today out of necessity. The only comments I have to make is probably not as positive as the ones I've made before, but it's amazing to me that only if we take countywide as a whole, that only 19.6% of registered voters turned out to vote in this election. The election to me is local and local is very important because it sets the tone for the next few years. And so from this standpoint, I think sometimes my parents, teachers, and everyone were just not quite getting the word out about how important it is to vote and what the sacrifices have done previously since about, what, 1773 or '04 to allow us this opportunity to determine our not only local, state, and national, at this time it was it was all local, but I hope that people will take this a little more serious coming up and study the issues and understand what's going on in front of them and have that ability to choose the direction and the way and who represents them. I think local is very important. Thank you for allowing me to comment on this a little bit. Now we'll have a time for public comment with items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to do that? If not, we will turn to the additions or revisions to the agenda. Commissioner Friesen?
Yeah, I'd like to add an executive session item for a consult with legal counsel.
For client attorney, okay. And for how long and who will attend?
I'd like to invite the county administrator. I think a 15-minute conversation would be fine.
All right. Commissioner Sellers?
I have no items.
County Administrator Randy?
Yes, I would like to request an attorney-client executive session for 30 minutes with the county councilor myself to attend.
Okay. And this also pertains to yours with attorney-client privilege for both executive sessions.
Yeah, it's just two different ones.
Okay, make that clear.
I move we approve the revised agenda as stated.
Your second?
Second. Which item was that on?
On the consent agenda as well, oh, no, no, excuse me, revisions to the agenda, the two executive sessions added.
You're adding it to?
At the bottom of the county commission reports and comments.
Okay. Yeah, I would second that.
All right, further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. All right. Next on the item is consent agenda, which includes the vouchers. Those are bills for payments owed by the county or related taxi units and a new lease proposal for the mail machine and folder inserter from Midwest, single source, and Pitney Bowls. Is there any comments regarding this? If not, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the consent agenda items 6A and B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items 6A and 6B. Any further discussion? Not, roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Business items today are the community corrections, annual department update. Randy, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Randy Regir, Director of Reno County Community Corrections. Our mission statement is community correction seeks to reduce recidivism and enhance public safety by providing evidence-based supervision and interventions to assist clients in achieving long-term positive behavior change. I want to start with that because this is really what drives everything that we do within community corrections. Starting there, you know, public safety and reducing recidivism really needs to be a priority. That needs to be at the core of what we're doing. We believe that the best way to achieve public safety and reducing this recidivism is by changing people's thinking and behavior. We want to make sure that the people that are a danger to the community, we're revoking them and getting them sent to prison. People that won't engage, just really refuse to engage in supervision, those are the people we're wanting to send to prison, not the people that are just maybe a nuisance. We want to continue to learn new and effective ways of supervising people. It's that evidence-based piece. We want to make sure that we're on top of these things and trying to use the best methods possible. And then we also want to make sure that we're shooting for long-term behavior change and not just short term. We're not really just interested in getting someone off supervision. We want to make sure that these changes stick and it's something that's going to change the person more long term. So research shows that the relationship between an officer and the client has a really large impact on whether the person will be successful or not. If it's cold or even conflict within that relationship, the chances of a person being successful are somewhat diminished. Whereas if you have a good relationship, you're giving the person positive feedback, you're really working to advocate for that client and guide them in the right direction, there's a much greater chance that the person will be successful on supervision. With that, we want to make sure that we're training officers and then also really coaching them in how they're conducting office appointments and anything they do with clients to make sure that we're improving their skills and really, really helping them do the best job that they can. You know, we all know that changing a person's behavior is a big challenge, even if we just look within our own lives, it can be a big challenge, even if we're pretty motivated to make changes, it's difficult, but the people we're working with, they're getting forced to make these changes. Most of them are dealing with drug addiction, mental illness, or both, so there's a lot of challenges there. One of the things that we talk with our officers about regarding clients is the idea of ambivalence. This is kind of the idea of weighing out options. You know, for a lot of our people, they don't want to go to jail, they don't want to serve their prison sentence, but you know, on the other hand, they also don't really want to give up their old friends, they don't want to give up their drug use and really just overall their lifestyle. So you have this conflict where at times a person will do well and make some changes and really work hard at it and then they'll backslide. So you have this continual pattern with a lot of people where they'll really work hard at it and then they'll have a backslide, you know? And if you just look at your own life, if you've tried to make a change, maybe there's those times too where you said, you know, I was making good progress and then, you know, I had backslides. So, you know, that's just one of the things that we deal with our clients. And again, that kind of goes back to this idea of ambivalence, we're weighing out choices and some days it's easier to make the right choice and some days it's a little bit more difficult. For some of our people, it's actually easier for them to make the choice to say, I'll go serve my prison sentence than it will to actually make those changes. Again, changes can be really difficult and so some people just decide it's just really easier to go do that. You know, a lot of the people we deal with, it's you're looking at immediate gratification and kind of a gambling is the way they operate. And so this issue of people choosing to go serve their sentence, that was a big factor on our revocations this past year. Forty-five percent of our people that were revoked to prison last year, they either did that, they either asked to go serve their prison sentence or did it as part of a plea agreement. The median remaining DOC sentence that they had was 15 months, but we had 10 people that were revoked that or that chose to just go serve their sentence that had less than 10 months to go serve. So when you think about that, when the consequences for not changing are really low, then that motivation to change is often pretty low as well. It's kind of hard to do. A lot of those cases, we were just recommending, we would have been recommending some type of jail sanction and then inpatient treatment or following up with substance abuse treatment or mental health treatment. But when a client comes in to court and tells a judge, you know, I'd rather just go serve my sentence, it's unlikely that the judge is going to push for reinstatement when the person's just wanting to go serve their sentence. It's pretty easy because we know that the client can get out of jail and then just never report again. So they kind of win in the end if that's what they want to do. So that's typically how that works. This year so far, our revocations are up, so are our condition violation revocations, so those people that are getting revoked and don't have new charges. One of the factors we think plays into this is just reduced sanctioning options. People that were assigned after July of 2019 are no longer eligible for the 120 or 180-day prison sanction. So in the past, a lot of times what you'd see is someone's on supervision and they're really having a hard time. You know, they might go back in front of the judge and get 30 days in jail or 60 days in jail and we'd be trying treatment options, you know, and then you'd maybe progress to the either the 120 or 180-day prison sanctions, kind of we're just really moving through our options and kind of escalating as we go, trying to get some behavior change there and some motivation. Well, they took those away a few years ago and so right now all we have is up to 60 days in jail with sanctioning options. So I think that that's one of the factors that we're dealing with. Obviously COVID has had some impact on our clients' motivation level to keep coming in and just some of the challenges with getting them into the office. A couple of other things I wanted to hit on was diversion through House Bill 2026. This is a felony drug possession diversion in the past or that took effect in July of this year. This allows someone who's arrested for a felony drug case to get diversion. And then with that, the whole idea that they get drug and alcohol treatment, but the idea behind that is it allows somebody with really no criminal history or very minimal criminal history to avoid getting a felony conviction, just because that, you know, when you look at employment and so a few other things, it adds some challenges when they get that felony. So this law allows for that. We still need to work some of those details out with the district attorney's office. Really, the district attorney's office is in charge of, they're the ones that make the decision as to who gets diversion and who doesn't. So we'll be working with them a little bit on that. One of the difficulties is the Department of Corrections doesn't, the DOC grants do not pay for diversion supervision, so that's one of the roadblocks we're working through. But currently, this is a population we already supervise, so we kind of would like to continue with supervising that population. Your commitment to help support community corrections in calendar year '22, actually it does allow us to be able to provide that supervision because we have an alternate funding source. Couple other things to hit on regarding improving our use of technology and reducing the use of paper. This is a big shift in thinking for us. You know, when I started with the agency, everything relied on that paper file. The only thing I think that we, looking back, the only thing I think we did electronically was we entered or we typed up our client contact notes on a Word document. So you know, it's a big shift from that. But what we've done is we've started a pilot project. We've got a couple of officers working on this who are doing electronic signatures and so we're really trying to get that moving forward. Really, our long-term goal is going to be to really just go pretty much paperless when it comes to having client files and it'll also shift to having officers testify in court using their laptops instead of a paper file. So just a few things there to work through as we progress forward in that. The other thing I wanted to hit on was just funding. The projected grant allocations will come out in January after the governor's budget comes out. At this point, we've been told that the Department of Corrections did not ask for more funding for community corrections. However, they said that they'll continue to work on that in the budget reconciliation process that will happen yet this fall or yet here before January. So we're optimistic that that funding will come through, but we're also somewhat doubtful that we'll actually see increases. There's a lot of play in that, so that's one of our big challenges that we're facing. I want to hit on those items. Is there anything else you'd like me to answer questions on?
You know, Randy, I've mentioned this before, but I think with, it might even be more useful now with the labor market, is taking a look and visiting with Randy Reinhardt, maybe you know him, from Leavenworth.
He has a manufacturing business up there and he has worked an agreement with Leavenworth
to, they take a potential employee, a person that qualifies under their guidelines and works them into a program, but it's not just hiring them. They have a complete program that follows through, very similar to what you're doing, only it's more of a, and so I wonder if, visiting with him, that maybe there might be a potential to work with a company or businesses here that would follow the guidelines that they have set up that's been really positive.
Yeah, it's interesting. You know, we do have people that work in the same places that the prison uses, but sometimes that causes some conflicts. So sometimes that's a little bit of a barrier to use the same employers that the prison currently uses because you're having felons come in from the community who could be bringing things to inmates who are then going back to the facility. So it's one of the roadblocks. But we really see that a little bit of that work getting done with new beginnings. They have a program where they're really working on training people and working them into that employment, but it is really beneficial for that piece, yeah.
I just might.
Yeah, thank you.
Reach out if you would and see if anything that they're doing would be practical here.
What was his first name?
Randy.
Randy, okay.
Reinhardt. I'll try to get you the business.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Does the suggestion that there will be no more state funds for community corrections from the state present any budget issues to Reno County for 2023?
Yeah, I think it does. I mean, I think we're going to continue to be in a position that's very tight on funding. You know, the way we look at that, we're kind of balancing some of the money that the county's going to provide in calendar year '22 and then also client reimbursements. We're just trying to really work through those things. We're really trying to be very frugal on spending. You know, some of our grants, it's interesting, some of our grants are very specific, so what we consider the behavioral health grant, which pays for things like substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment, Oxford House, a few other things like that, it's very specific, that we can only use it for those certain things. So on one hand, yeah, we're spending a fair amount of money on Oxford Houses, on mental health treatment, on substance abuse programming, but the flip side is those dollars can't be used for other things. Though, one of the things that we've really pushed over the last several years with the state is they've given us additional money for programming. Well, that programming's really good and it's important, but you can't do programming if you can't do supervision. So you can't defund supervision and reduce the funding for that or flat fund that for eight years and expect that that's really going to be successful, even though you have programs. Those programs are only one piece of that and that's why I focus on this relationship between an officer and a client is so important. I mean, that's really where the work is getting done. Those programs are important, but if you don't have the funding for an officer to spend time with a client, it's just not going to work. So when we presented, one of the staff from Johnson County presented with a group of us to the Joint Commission on Corrections in Juvenile Justice last week regarding this issue. And so one of the things that he pointed out was, under ideal circumstances, Johnson County at the end of the week, a Johnson County officer has about 15 minutes extra in the week if nothing goes wrong. Well, we were with one of those agencies that had, we were over, we would have to get over 10 hours of overtime. My officers would have to get over 10 hours of overtime just to meet KDOC standards if nothing was going wrong. So if you didn't have clients that were violating, if you didn't have clients that were not reporting, you'd still be need 10 hours of overtime every week by every officer just to meet KDOC standards. So these are some of the things that we're dealing with. The money's there for programming, but we have to be able to do that supervision piece. And if we're not doing that adequately and if that's not funded, it's going to reflect it in our successes and the number of people we're revoking.
Randy, one of the things that you said here that was really surprising to me is that a substantial percentage of your clients decide they would rather go to jail than work with you on a better solution. Is there, are there, is there more we can do to convince them that's not a great option? I mean, one of the things that I've been surprised in my first eight or nine months here is, you know, every week we get the expense reports and the jail and everything that revolves around the jail is a huge amount of expense to the county. And so you have a very hard job, but is there more investment we need to do on your side to keep people out of jail and more productive?
So it's interesting. So if you think about, and I mentioned that our clients are kind of gamblers and they weigh out their options. When a client goes out and gets high, 100% of the time they get high. Every time they put a needle in their arm, they get high. It's a 100% reward system.
Yeah.
The flip side is, when you look at supervision, we're only going to catch them maybe one out of 10 times, maybe that's even being optimistic. So I can gamble. You know, a lot of our clients, they kind of just work this system, they kind of know. And really, you kind of get this attitude of, I'm pretty smart, you know? So I know my appointment's not for another week, so I can get high for the next three, maybe four days and still not get caught. So even when you increase the drug testing and you kind of make it more random, put people on some different systems there, okay, so then what we do is we start, they start to think, they say, okay, well, they don't test for K2 very often. Dilaudid, if I use dilaudid, that's out of my system, I get a great high and that's out of my system probably four hours, maybe eight hours, I can beat the system. I can go use kratom. Kratom is similar to opiates and so I can use that technically, it's not illegal, I can go buy it here in town, and yet I'm going to get my high, and yet they're probably not going to test for it. And so you're fighting this gambling system and then you look back and you deal with people that have trauma. You know, you've got men and women who have been sexually abused, physically abused, verbally abused all their lives. So you're dealing with a group of people that, you know, at times, look, they'll do anything to suppress the difficulties in their life. You know, I mean, we deal with people who, you know, you look at it and you say, this doesn't even make sense. You're using drugs, you know, you're going to lose your kids. You know, they know that and you look at it and say, this doesn't make sense. You're right, it doesn't make sense. It just kind of shows how powerful that drug addiction is and how powerful some of those early life events are that people just can't overcome them. I mean, it just takes so much work and it just takes so, I mean, like I said, it's just so much work for a person. And that's when they'll give up. You know, people just say, look, I just, I can't do it. You know, they'll not report, they'll keep, you know? So these are some of those difficulties and that's why I say that you really need that staff time to be able to sit down and talk to a person and really invest in like, okay, okay, so these are the difficulties, how do we work through them? Let's work together, let's develop ways to do that. We can't come up with those solutions. Really, you know, that's something we have, that our, we want to train officers to really work through, because as an officer, we're fixers. It's really easy for the client to come in and say, oh, these are my problems, they say, okay, this is how you fix it, now move on, okay. But really what takes time, what really is the best investment is really taking the time with a client to draw that out of them. Okay, these are your problems. Okay, what are our options? Let's work through them and it's just really this partnership of working through options and working through things that you can do with a person and what they can do. And then, you know, we come in there and try to find solutions. How can we help? What are the things that we need? Okay, you can't afford to get your medication at Horizon's, your mental health medication. Okay, we'll see what we can do, see if we can't help pay for those things. You know, just to try to bring them along, because like you said, if we put them in jail, they're going to get out. If we put them in prison, same deal, they're going to get out and we haven't really made any progress with them. So really, have we really helped our community by incarcerating someone and then they just turn around and get right back out and we've never done anything? You know, and then you think about the opiates. So one of the things we know with opiates is if I'm an opiate addict, your tolerance increases, so the amount you use increases. So I go to jail and I'm using this amount of opiates. I get out of jail 30 days later and I go back and use this level of opiates. Well, my tolerance has decreased, that's when you receive an overdose. So there's all these factors that we're trying to deal with that are just so difficult. And so it doesn't really, you know, putting people in jail is not the right solution. The majority of the time when we take somebody back to court, a lot of times what we're dealing with is somebody's using drugs, they just, they can't get a control of it. We'll look at the detox because we have detox here in town, but one of the problems we have is I don't know how many people were sent to detox and they aren't there an hour because they can leave. So sometimes we're looking, they're going to be in jail, we're going to ask for 30 to 60 days in jail to give us time to get the assessments done and get treatment beds in place, inpatient treatment beds. It's easy to expect 30 to 45 days, maybe longer, to get an inpatient treatment bed. So we're asking for that jail time, gives them time to sober up, get their mind clear and then what we're going to do is we're going to transport them directly to inpatient treatment. That way then, they've got the best chance, like that's the best chance they have to have a clear mind, be going into treatment and get them on the right track. So I agree with you. I mean, that's why I say we really want to send the dangerous people to prison. So like if you look at our revocations and who we're recommending prison on, it's the people that are battering other people, domestic violence, the people that you get caught with a firearm, those are the people that we're saying, look, we don't feel comfortable asking that they be put back out on the street. We're going to focus on, we want those people to go to prison. We don't want the people to go to prison that we know are low-level offenders who are just going to, they're not going to be any better when they get out of prison or out of jail. So those are the people we're really targeting.
So if we were to give you more funding for more staff, could you show us a positive correlation of less people going to jail?
When it comes to jail, it's hard to say. We track some of that information. One of the problems is the dynamics of courts, DA's office, treatment providers, some of these things really make it challenging. So, you know, it's difficult. Research clearly shows that the time that's spent there results in lower revocations. It's hard. One of the things that we deal with, you know, it's like when we write our comprehensive plan grants to the Department of Corrections and I look at all of our data and I track a fair amount of data and really try to go through that, some of the things that we track, because our numbers are low enough, they're not statistically significant. So we really try So we really try to watch them. We try to, try to look at certain things. You know, a few years ago, we were sending more, the, the percentage of women going to prison didn't really make sense. You know, so you try to put some things in place for that, but the overall number of women that we're supervising and going to prison, it's only about 25% of our overall, overall population. So it's really hard to say, oh, well, based on our numbers, this is directly the effect, just because the numbers are low enough to be statistically significant. So one of the things we could say is, man, we started this great new program, we're doing all these things, but if you got a new judge and new district attorneys, that, those things may be off the table. You may, that program may be extremely successful and following evidence-based practices, but if, if I go back to court and the first revocation that judge is going to send them to prison, it doesn't matter what I'm doing over in my office because it, it just doesn't work, you know?
Well, I, I wanted to highlight two other things really quick. I appreciate you picking up on the commission's interest in increasing efficiency and decreasing expense through technology and, and paper reduction. So I appreciate your efforts and the pilot program that you're doing there. I would, just, just hearing you talk today, I think it would be very interesting to me in your next report, when you come back, to get a few ideas from you that are, that are just out of the box, non-traditional, just things that you think could, could really, you know, shift the paradigm for your organization. It sounds like you have a huge challenge and, and you're, like, you're part of this ecosphere that is very expensive to the community. And I think you're, you're, you're in a part that has an opportunity to make lives better and reduce our, our community expense. So we encourage you. I'd love to hear some, some more of your ideas. So, this report's well done. You always do a great job. Thank you for your time.
Looking at some, some figures, the actual prime rate population of the, of the jail has not decreased significantly, has it?
You know, I think when COVID first was coming on, I think those numbers probably went down. I'm sure that Sean, Captain McClay would be able to give us some better information on that. The problems weren't decreasing. You know, you know, if you say there's, you want that accountability for a client, and we do exit surveys for our clients, and the overall overwhelming response when we ask about whether drug testing helps people refrain from drug, from use, they, they, yeah, absolutely, it helps. And then, so when you back off on supervision and you're not testing, you, you saw, we saw this issue of, you know, oh, I have COVID, I'm sick, I can't come in, and all these excuses. It really creates a road block and it really creates, it's allowed a person to say, hey, I've got another great reason that if I, if I'm using, I'll just use this excuse to avoid coming in. So, yeah, I think it had an impact, but I think that there's this counter issue that, that we reduce some, some people in jail time, jail. I think that the prison numbers have certainly gone down, but the flip side is, has we really fixed the problem? I mean, are we really making changes in people's lives? Or was this just a, a, a separate issue, you know? And so I think that that's one of the, one of the concerns is I think that we're still, we're really still struggling with that, those core issues.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Pretty much, for very informative.
Thank you.
I will take the progress report on the Reno County Municipal Solid Waste Landfill progress.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So earlier this year, we had come forth to you with our annual agreements, and it was actually when we were opening up our bids for this new construction that we have at the landfill currently. And I figured it was probably a good time to come and update you all on our projects that we've got going on out there. At the landfill currently, we do have a lot going on, if you've not been out there. So I figured we'd do a little PowerPoint presentation to kind of show you where we are, where the progress is, and kind of go over some things that we've been working on. So just to refresh, going forth on our new facilities, on our new construction that we've got with our Household Hazardous Waste Customer Convenience Center and the Scale House addition, I kind of wanted to give you some numbers and budget where we're at. I know you see a lot of things and a lot of vouchers that come through, but to give you an update on our budget, we were approved for the construction contract for $2,654,700 with Conco. And we have had a couple of change orders. And on those change orders, it's, that we've had, it's been with the septic system. We've got our Scale House windows, and then we've got the fiber trenching that we worked on. But the, also, we had some credits on some signage. So I worked with Dawn at Public Works, and we were able to work on some of the signage that we need to put up when we have our new facilities in place to get us a credit back on that. So the amount of change orders we've had in all of this is a little, under 1% at $21,248. The approved budget we had there for new scales and a generator, the actual cost we've actually saved, we are, are going to use, I came up with an idea to use our current scale we use now at the facilities we have and use that scale for an outbound scale. So we only purchased one new inbound scale because the outbound, the scale we have currently is only less than five years old. So I thought, you know, I worked with the Hamel Scale Company, and we were able to correlate to where we can move that old, the, the scale we currently have to our outbound scale. And then the generator that we, we thought we were going to have to purchase was actually in our bid and the contractor had bid specked it out. So it was already in there. So we did have a cost savings of that, of that $300,000, which will actually help for some fiber that we're putting in for the fiber, for the internet. A savings of $178,000 is what we've saved, towards, allowed me to be able to, to, to pay for those other things. The construction quality assurance, our CQA with SCS, our residential CQA, that work is where, they normally would send a technician over on daily basis with this project to give progress reports every day, take pictures and photos of the, the progress that's happening over at the construction project. Reno County and SCS work together. We actually, my assistant, Dawn, is actually going over there and doing a lot of the CQA work that is needed on a daily basis to save the county some money. And we actually are budgeted for $296,500. And through the end of September, we have a remaining budget of $177,000 on that CQA project that we, or CQA agreement that we have with SCS. So it's allowed us to save quite a bit of money for the county doing that and helping out on that end of it. And it's given my assistant, Dawn, you know, a sense of ownership to also help along with this project and, and go along with things and learn about the construction with the project we've got going on. So the total approved budget we had for this project was $3,251,200. And to date, as of the end of the month, September, we've spent about 60% of our total approved budget at 1.1 million, $958,000. So we're getting closer to the end of the construction, but we're not quite there yet. Now, it's just the fine tune details of what they're, we've got some concrete, a lot of concrete's being poured out there at this time. Scheduling wise, you know, we should potentially have everything completed by the end of this year. It's going to be Reno County, that the landfill staff is actually going to be constructing the hall road, the new hall road that's going to be where, once the fencing is up, we'll be able to tear a fence out and put, put down a new road and construct that. And then we've also got to work on getting our outbound scale moved over. Of course, all this is going to end towards the end of December, around Christmas time. So I would kind of tentatively say a date would be the first part of January, when we'll move over and actually be in the new facilities. IT installation, the CTA has came in and run some cables for our internet, or for our computers. I've also got some quotes from our camera people that we use, Dynamic Electronics. They came out a couple of weeks ago to put in quite a few more camera systems out of the new facilities. We use them currently now. So they're going to give us a quote here in the next couple of days so we can get that started. But I would say, tentatively, looking at the end of the year, beginning of next year is when we'll be able to fully be moved over. The grass, I know there's some lawn maintenance, grass seeding. Of course, that won't happen until in the spring. Obviously, it's too late to do that now. So, you know, the, the landscaping will be a little bit later on in the springing year to get the grass installed, but everything else should be moved over by the first of the year. So I've got a couple of photos. I know where I've seen Ron out there, Hurst out there a couple of times, but I don't know if the other two commissioners have been out to see the progress. The main entrance, we do have concrete pour for the out, the outbound scale for the exit. We're working on this week. We're going to do a big pour on Friday. These pictures show the main entrance. There is the office, the common area where our scale attendant will be. It's kind of a bigger, bigger space of what he's got now because we're going to have the in and out scales. And then our customer convenience center and our Household Hazardous Waste Recycling Center building where they can drive underneath and they can drop off their materials for paint and chemicals. And there's also a reuse building that they'll be able to go into and, just like we have now. So the facilities have came along nicely and, and they, things are taking shape now. The, the walls are going up and they're actually getting ready to start painting, so.
Any questions?
The next, sorry. The next pictures are, there's, we currently go park all of our trucks. There's a truck parking area in the back of that Household Hazardous Waste Customer Convenience Area. There's an area for our Household Hazardous Sorting and Training Room is the one on the right, on the bottom. That's going to be nice for our Household Hazardous Waste Technician because currently, when people drop off chemicals and materials and that such, they place them outside and then he's sorting everything and doing everything outside in the cold and the wet and the rain, the heat. And everything is going to be in climate controlled form and be able to, to sort through those things. So, just a couple of different pictures of the buildings that we've got. And then while we're talking about the projects itself, I almost, also wanted to give you kind of a project update with our, our agreements that we've got with SCS, to kind of show you where we were at with the budget and where we have actually currently been billed to date and the percent remaining on having all, all of the agreements that we have. You know, our annual services, of course, those are our groundwater testing that we do May and November. We have permit renewals on that. There's our closure plans, quarterly gas reports that we have, and then our on-call services. And then going down the list, of course, gas collection system. We currently on a project for that, for our cell eight, or cell seven gas wells. We are currently on that project as well, installing those gas wells that are required to be installed by the end of this year, first part of 2022 in January. And so that kind of just gives you an overview on the cost savings. We've done really well this year on our budgeting when it comes to the agreements and working with SCS. It's very important, you know, there's a lot of moving parts that go on with, with the landfill out here. And with SCS, you know, working with us, they have a lot of, they do a lot of our air reporting that goes with EPA, the state regulations, federal regulations. They serve as basically our licensing authority to protect us as Reno County. There's a lot of things that we have to follow and, and things have to be done on certain times. And they do a really good job with that. So I appreciate working with them and, and keeping things on track with all these projects that we have going on out there. And it kind of leads into my, you know, the value. We've been talking about values here a lot lately with the county. And the value for Reno County to me with SCS, they, they are out there on site a lot. It would take a lot of extra people if we were to fully staff somebody, multiple people with multiple professions to come out and do what they do. And currently, we've, they're currently, on average, they are out eight to 12 times a month. But in the last couple of months, we've had multiple projects going and we've had two to three people on site in different project areas at one time. But some things that we've worked together on, and it'll lead to our next slide that I've got for everybody. The earthwork that we did, the pad work, construction for our new facilities on the construction quality service, assurance. The agreement that we had with them, we actually closed this out. This was from last year. I just wanted to mention that we were under budget by 16,000 on that with them. And then they also worked with us when we did some fiber optic routing assessments, when we were going to do fiber optic internet discussions. They came over and they did a meeting with us and they did, you know, they, with no costs to the county for that. They just helped us to get things going. But what the biggest thing for me is on notice of violations, since we've, for the past almost 10 years, we've had no notice of violations with the state inspectors that come out, which is really a big deal to me. We take a lot of pride in what we do out there. And the, the new facilities, you know, I'm really excited to upgrade and expand and hopefully even add some services that we can do to make things a little more streamlined at the landfill. The next slide is actually some of the things that we have actually saved in the last five to seven years here, working on, coming up with ideas. We used to do a lot of subcontracting work when it comes to our cell constructions. And you can go through the list here, and I'm not going to go through all of them. But it kind of shows you the amount of savings that we have, have saved through the years, working with our consultants when it comes to excavation on our cells. A lot of that dirt work used to be subcontracted, subcontracted out, and we no longer do that. We self-perform all of that ourselves, except for the last 10% of the dirt work that needs to happen before it's set to grade for our cell construction. But in those years, you know, it's costed us around $250,000 to Reno County to pay for other contractors to come and do the little bit of work that they have done. In return, it has saved over $4.5 million in that five to seven year term. So I just wanted to let you guys see this and let you know the cost of things, you know, why it's so expensive, why we do what we do to try to save the county some money when we do this. Do you have any questions for me?
On your roads out there, where you just have one road going into the prison facility, you will probably have two roads, one in, one out.
That's correct.
So you won't have to make that big turn just to...
Yeah. So the one, the first slide that showed the pictures, it showed the concrete on one side, that's going to be our exit side. And then we're going to have the, the entrances on the, the west side.
I meant going into the dump area.
So we'll have just the one way to go. So when you come in on the entrance, the new entrance, you're going to go to the right and it's going to, there's going to only be one way in and one way out when you come in, since we have the two scales now for inbound, outbound.
Any other questions, comment?
Yeah. This is a good report, Megan. When, when I visited a few months ago, we talked a little bit about, well, there are two things that came to mind when you were talking. One was technology that could increase labor efficiencies. Like, it looked like there's a lot of manual, you know, weighing. Do you have a roadmap for, for new technology in the landfill?
So there is ways, the only thing we could, with, with the gas system or even the groundwater, with gas wells, we can do automated, but you have to have electric ran to each of those lines. We have to, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts that go with that. Of course, when we have moving parts like that, there's cost that goes with it. As far as manual working, as far as the manual labor goes, there's a lot of things with the landfill that, that requires a lot of manual labor. In order to save the county money, it takes a lot of my employees to actually physically touch things that come out to the landfill, to sort, to separate, to allow us to make, to save the county money for recycling purposes. So if somebody comes out and they've got things that are mixed in their load, our guys have to physically manually touch those things and manual labor wise for, for that to work. The only thing that could be streamlined technology wise would, that comes to mind that we had talked about would be the, the wells that we have. We have over 100, 100 and some odd wells that are methane wells that can be, there is a way to do it automated where you don't have a physical person come out and do gas but well, gas well balancing, that type of thing. But you still are going to have, to have a person that comes out and do those things at some point. It's not going to be completely streamlined, but there are options.
What about like, when you have, I understand you have to kind of QC what goes into the landfill, but I assume there's certain trusted partners that you, you trust what's coming in and, and having an ability... in and having an ability where like, if they just drove up and the system weighed it and they, they drove on through and it was just automatically weighed and entered into a system so that process would...
So unfortunately, since we are not just a municipal solid waste landfill, we are actually one that just, we don't just take trash. We take construction demolition, tree waste, brush, compost, all of the different elements that there are to our landfill. A lot of facilities like you're, you're talking about would be either a transfer station or you're talking big cities to where all they bring in is trash and they're compactor trucks that is just trash bags. So an automated system like that is easy for those, those individuals and those companies to do, but since we are a regional solid waste facility, we have to follow the rules and regulations from the state that we have to have certain people onsite that, that is inspecting loads when they come in. We have to do multiple site inspections three times a day. We have to do random inspections once a week on our C and D side and our municipal solid waste side. So there's nothing automated wise we will be able to do as far as that goes when, when...
So you have to check every single load?
Every load that gets dumped. We have to have a tipping, there's a tipping deck on our solid waste trash side, and then there is a tipping deck, what we call on our construction demolition side. And when you come out, you dump your loads where those tipping decks are, and we have to have somebody go through those loads to make sure there's nothing unauthorized that can go in the facility.
So you check every load today?
We actually designed part of our system, put RFID tags on those trusted partners' trucks so you don't have to manually enter anything for a scale ticket or anything like that. So there are some technology and software upgrades, but they probably got lost in the minutia. So we have that. So if you've got repeat customers coming in that you know and you trust, those trucks are going to be tagged, that's going to be read, it's going to automatically print and calculate scale tickets for accounting and things like that. So some of that is going to be automated.
But there's, there still will be a scale attendant that has to be there to, to see those, those trucks come across.
The other thing we talked about was the misuse of the facilities and your lack of penalties associated with, with the misuse of the facilities. Have you thought more about how we could help in that regard?
As, as to...
Well, when, when, when I was there, you, you indicated that people often didn't follow the rules, and there wasn't much penalty associated with not following the rules. Like people would dump things in areas that were not authorized to be dumped and they would leave and let you clean it up, and there was really no penalty for that?
That's correct, yeah.
Is, is there something that you could recommend to help us with that?
I mean, and recommending for, for you as the commission to make decisions, you know, other facilities, they have fines that you can assess. If you come out and you do not untarp your load in the untarping area, there's a, you know, there's a fine for that. Or if you, at this point, since we are going to start charging at the first of January for construction and demolition, you know, we'll have tag numbers and that type of information. So if people do do dumping that they shouldn't have done, you know, we can go back and, and that would be a fee you guys could charge as far as, you know, either not allowing to come back or giving some sort of fee to charge for that type of an incident that happens. There are other facilities that if they ask for help to pull off their load, currently we do not allow that for insurance purposes, but there are facilities that do, but they charge them a $20 fee to do that. Or if their vehicle dies, their battery dies and they take the jump box out there, there's, there's different fees that can be charged for those things, but as far as, you know, people running and dumping things and then leaving, that would be a decision and a...
Is that something you could recommend to us?
I could recommend that, yes. I've not had very many issues since we have, you know, it kind of comes and, comes and goes in spurts. We try to educate the public on what they can and can't do, and what they can and can't bring, and where things need to go at the facility. But if there is those instances that come in, you know, we do have the authority to reject loads as they come in. And if people are, you know, we, we have rejected some loads that have came in the facility before because they've had too much trash and they were supposed to be demolished and they're a big contractor that comes out.
Okay, well, I think the, I think a couple of important things to note. One is that the landfill is rate based and it's not, it's not funded through, through property tax.
Correct.
I also, in my visit to your facility, I think you, you run a very good facility and you've done a good job there, and I appreciate your efforts for using labor that we already have, that's already kind of sunk costs to assist in, in the construction, reducing construction costs. So appreciate your work on, on all that. Thank you.
And I think with our new facilities, there's going to be some challenges. There's going to be some different change, and change is sometimes not always well received by people. But I believe in the long term, in the master plan of what we've thought, you know, five years ago when we started planning this, I believe that our new facilities that we're putting in place now, I think, once everybody kind of gets used to how we're running it and how things need to go, I think everybody in the county should be very pleased with what we have for a facility.
Mr. Sellers?
Nothing.
I will say that, that I'm one who does haul out there the things that don't, maybe I'm the only one here, but I think your, people that work out there do a really tremendous job, and I like the idea that, and it's been going on for a long time. And that's when you do take things out to C and D, the demolition part, that there is a dumpster there and they will instruct you to not throw it in this area, but take it out and put it in the dumpster. And also the fact that if you do have a separated load, just like the other day, we had, we had taken things out there, but we do some, didn't go somewhere. And educating the public is a tough thing to get done on this, but we sorted those out on the trailer ahead of time and so that we knew. But having that dumpster there so we didn't have to go to another place to dump was really, really good to have, and I think that's an efficiency that helps everyone out.
And, and that's my goal. In the next couple of months, you'll be seeing a lot of things on social media, posting about our new construction demolition fee that's coming in January, is education about what, what the rules are, how this is going to work. You know, if anybody has any questions, we're more than happy to answer them. That way you know if you get questions, it will be posted, things will, you know, businesses will be notified and we'll be well aware of what the changes to come the first part of the year.
And I, I think the friendliness out there, you know, they don't know who I am, and the friendliness out there's been really good.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Administrator Report.
Good thing those chairs have wheels, isn't it, Joe? Joe, good thing those chairs have wheels, isn't it?
Yes, there is.
I just have a couple of items to make you aware of. Barbara Lilyhorn with RCAT sent me an email yesterday and just letting you know that I believe it was Monday morning, there was a small accident at Third and Poplar in South Hutch. A lawn care company pickup and trailer hit one of our buses. The South Hutch Police responded. I believe the other driver was cited, but there is damage done to the wheel well and body of one of our buses that we've turned into insurance. So just kind of giving you an update if you hear about that. Then we had talked about having a, the commissioners hosting mayors in Reno County for a dinner, a meeting, which would be a public meeting, since all three of you would be there. The date that we have decided upon is Tuesday, December 14th. That'll be at 6:00 PM. Location to be determined. I'm waiting to see how many people we have before we determine whether to have it at a community center, conference room, or at a restaurant. At this time, I believe there's been five, actually six city mayors that have responded that they are available for that day. So we will have a, probably a very good showing at that. And then received today a letter from TEC asking for a letter of support on a grant they're applying for, a letter of support from the county commission, a grant for two accessible buses. The K dot grant would be, K dot would cover 80%, TEC would pay 20%. The total cost is 153,000. So with your permission, I would write a letter on behalf of the county commission and have you sign. The grant application is due November 18th. There's not another county commission meeting before then, so I wanted to see if you guys wanted me to go ahead and draft a letter of support and get all three of your signatures on it.
I have no trouble with that.
After our discussion with them regarding the use of, we had here a few months ago regarding the use of our normal bus system, why, it was explained to us, I think, on why that was, they needed their own.
They have holidays and Sundays and other times that RCAT's not running, yes. That's all I have.
Consensus on that? Yep. Okay, Commissioner Freezen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Longer list than normal. Sorry. I had an opportunity to spend some time at the Kansas Association of Counties meeting in Overland Park a few weeks ago. One of the sessions, of course, was, was COVID-19 and, and the impacts and policy issues that are facing counties. I found, I found it interesting to hear from other counties and how they were interacting with, with their health department and, and county health officer. Seems like there's some opportunity for more collaboration between this commission and, and the health officer and policies. I saw quite a bit of, of, of constant collaboration from, from, you know, county. There were, there were examples, one county, Riley County, which is similar to our size, Manhattan area, and then Johnson County, and they were very collaborative in their efforts, which I thought was positive and something that I think we could work on a little better in, in our county. And I think it might be time just to check in, and I'd like to hopefully see that, that on the agenda sometime in the next few weeks. The, the sheriff will be taking my spot on, on the ballot canvas next Tuesday. Appreciate Randy's work in securing a, an alternative elected official to, to oversee that because I will be absent. I might still dial in remotely depending on, on where I'm at, but appreciate the sheriff's willingness to step in for that process. The 43rd Street Bridge continues to draw occasional, complaints isn't the right word, but concern related to a blind spot with westbound traffic on 43rd Street. The west, west and eastbound traffic doesn't currently have a stop sign. Only the, the north and south do, and due to the elevation and the railing and fencing that is along the side of the bridge, that there is, or at least there, there is at least a perception that there's, there's a blind spot in that. So I encourage you to take a look. Don Britton is all over it. He's, he's, we've been communicating and he's been working with the engineer that designed it, and I think Don expressed late last week that he's still not satisfied with, with the status. So I just wanted the public to know that that's still under consideration. I appreciate Lori's work on, on the website and the refresh that she did, and that looks pretty nice, really nice actually. Appreciate, appreciate that. I was at the Startup Hutch strategic meeting this week. They had about a three hour meeting just to talk through strategic priorities and encouraged them to, to look even, lean, lean even further into any, any opportunities to, to help develop our existing business base here. And by that, I mean, if they can, I encourage them to meet with existing businesses in the community and look for ways to, to in-source those, those businesses, uses of, of different components. And as an example, Siemens, they have a, a large ecosphere of, of manufacturing components that, that they get out of county. And I think there's, there's a great opportunity for, for the Startup Hutch Group to incentivize either existing businesses or new businesses through entrepreneurs to, to develop, you know, supply chain within the county and grow our, our business base more organically in that way. Let me see here. I see the county clerk here and, and wanted to compliment her and, and, and the deputy election clerk on, on the work on the election yesterday. It's so easy to forget how complicated that process is and how critical it is that it runs flawlessly, and, and people expect that, and I think it's very challenging work. I, you know, it's, it's, it's amazing that they can coordinate a group of volunteers across the vast geographic area like Reno County and, and pull it off year after year and so well, so I appreciate that work of, of the clerk's office. So that's all I had. Thank you.
I too would like to compliment county clerk and election officer. I was at the election office for a few minutes last night and watched the system of boxes coming in and people cutting security and the data going into the computer and all very well organized, and I was very impressed with the organization of that. Commissioner Freezen, I'm pleased that you've spent some time with Startup Hutch. I think your expertise in helping them is excellent, and I'm glad that you're encouraging them to be as broad as possible. I think that's an excellent idea that you gave them. Also, I think it's fair for me to say today that I'm pleased with the voters' approval of our moving from three to five, since under our present system, we can't talk outside of public meetings to one another. I do want to thank Commissioner Freezen for his very positive editorial in the Hutch News some time ago. I think that helped with the efforts to get voters to agree to vote yes. We continue to have concerns with people on septic tank issues, and I hope the county administrator will work with the health department. In my opinion, we've got to improve that process on time, and I, I don't know that the county commission needs to be involved in that, but we just have too many complaints that it takes too much time to get approval. in that, but we just have too many complaints, that it takes too much time to get approval. That system needs to be looked at. And then finally, obviously, we've spent tons and tons of time on COVID issues in the last year and a half, and hopefully, COVID's improving. The numbers say it is, and I think, I hope that it continues to improve. I guess I'd hope that the three commissioners with the county administrator spend more time on some long-term projects for the county now that, that COVID time seems to be decreasing somewhat. So I think we're seeing more items go to the consent agenda with the approval of the commission. That takes less time in our meetings, and I'd hope that we spend more time on some studying of what some of the long-term issues of the county, the county courthouse remodel might be one of them. But there's others that we need to be spending some time on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yesterday, I was fortunate enough to be going with Jackson Swer and Bill and Aaron from SCID, and to present a little information on the SCID activities regarding Hutchinson. And so I thought they were well-received yesterday.
Who were, who'd you present to?
The city council.
Oh, okay.
The city council.
Good.
And it was really good having Bill Ample there to explain the different programs, especially those ones dealing with housing, and how much total increase in housing was done along with weatherization to the city. And, because he's the one in charge of that. He heads that department up. I would, this is an idea here for Commissioner Freezen. He brought this up, and I'll relate a little bit of my experience when, when Siemens came in, was we had, I visited with a couple, in fact, they called me about it, about that supply chain and doing some work for them. And they just couldn't meet the corporate demands to be a supplier. And so I think maybe that's an area, when you, since you brought it up, that maybe needs a little more discussion and see that there's, what possibilities there are with that, just from my past experience. Okay? The one item that I want to bring up is, is the very interesting discussion and leading of, at the joint KCCA and KAC meeting, that had to do with looking at the home rule status of Reno, of the counties. And they handed out a piece that showed the 39 cannot do's for the county that were included in the state statutes. While most of them had to do with general broad things, Harvey County Chip brought up the fact that they only had one supplier that could supply, or one vendor that could supply a needed HVAC unit or some sort, they've had some floods. And that they needed to fix real quick, and they had to, they only had one, one vendor. And so they had to go back into legislature to get approval, or someone higher up in Topeka to get approval to take this bid from the one vendor, because it's, it's states that have to have more than one bids. And so there's a few items in there that I, I think we're going to hear shortly from Kansas Association of Counties with regard to items regarding home rule. And while most of them are good, there's just a few that they like to look at with regards to the cannots that are set up in state statutes. And I thought the KCCA did a really good job with that presentation and had the presenter very knowledgeable. Another thing I'd like to suggest that, that we do for maybe by the end of the year, or at least in January, is take a look again at some of the items that we think we should, goes along with Commissioner Sellers on long range, is we need to set some objectives that we want to look at, things we want to cover and improve on, communication and so forth, for the next year. And then to, to put those in a form that we can then look at and see where we can go with them, and see what we can do. And basically, that's all I have. So at this time, I believe Joe has a motion ready for an executive session with, with which Randy brought up. And if it's all right with you, Commissioner Sellers, we'll take that one first.
Me, Freezen?
Yeah. Is it okay with you if we take this other one first?
Yeah. Can we, can we combine them?
Two different subjects. It's two different subjects, so.
I know what the subjects are, if there's.
There's two different subjects, so.
Two different, I think we need to do them separately. So with respect to the first one, if, if there's a consensus, we proceed on the one that Randy requests, if that's what we're going.
Yes, that's, if that's all right.
I would ask the board to move to recess into executive session for 30 minutes to confer with the board's legal counsel on a privileged legal matter, that being contractual matters with the city of Hutchinson. We have several contracts coming up which need to be renewed. Mr. Partridge and I should remain for that executive session. No formal decision will be made. Following that executive session, we will reconvene in regular session, and there will be a second motion to recess again into an executive session with legal counsel to discuss a privileged legal matter. And for the sake of the press here and the public, I, I would anticipate, I don't know, I don't know at this time whether some formal decision is expected out of the second executive session. But if not, then I would say that the board would, at the end of the second executive session, come back into regular, regular session and adjourn for the day.
Yeah, I, I made the, the request in the second. I don't, I don't expect to request any formal motion on the second matter.
And just for the sake of, also, how long would you anticipate the second?
15 minutes, I believe is what you said.
Executive session. We'll make the formal.
And the same people would be involved, the commission and the council and the administrator.
Okay.
Is that a single motion?
Well, I think you can do that motion after you come back out of the first meeting. I was just trying to.
We'll do the first motion first, and the second one, yes.
I would make the, the motion related to the first executive session as requested by the county councillor. I would amend the time to 45 minutes instead of 30.
Second. Does that mean then we have to wait 45 minutes before the other one? I would prefer myself to go in 30 minutes first, and then if we have to come out and do an extra session, then for that purpose, then we do that. That way we can speed things up, but.
Well, I, I don't know if I would agree that we have to use 45 minutes. It's not to exceed 45 minutes. And I think, I guess I would disagree that I like it better the other way, where you overestimate than underestimate, bring people in and out.
You see, people can, can come back at the end of the executive session. And, I mean, they may want to come back and, and see that you go through the second one. So I've al, I've often felt that you could always extend it, but then that allows you to, I mean, otherwise, I think you have to wait to 45 minutes.
Yes.
Because you've told them that it will take that long.
Yeah.
And that you reconvene after 45 minutes, if that's what you do.
Yes.
I know it's a technical thing.
Pretty standard operating procedure.
Yes.
Should I second the motion?
Well, what's the motion?
The motion must go in the executive session for 45 minutes. And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any more discussion? I've said, said mine already. So that means that if we get done in 20 minutes or 30 minutes, that we'll wait for 15 minutes to come back in, or 20 minutes to come back into session before we have our next executive session.
And, and that, if you, you might give an indication, Mr. Chairman, as to when the executive session will begin?
Yes. It will start at 10:30. If that's all right with you. You need a longer break than three minutes?
Appreciate it.
You'd appreciate it. Well, it'll start at 10:35 then. Is that all right?
That's fine.
All right. Roll call.
Commissioner Freezen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
No. Got a bad mark on the train.